All right, if we're ready, it's uh it's six P M. Uh gonna go ahead and call this uh me uh special session of the Harmony C D D to order. Uh start with roll call. Supervisor Lee is here, Supervisor Jukanis here, Supervisor Williams. It's not here Supervisor Phillips.
Here.
And Supervisor Cornell. Okay, so we do have a quorum in person. Uh so everyone's aware uh there are having uh electrical and air conditioning issues with our main venue. So we are dialing in through a laptop now, please be uh bear with us. Uh we'll try and speak as loudly and clearly as we can and be patient. Um but this is the best we can do with the uh circumstances. Uh first would be the audience comments, uh three minutes uh limit please to uh our uh agenda for this evening. Uh I'll open the floor. All right, yeah, Mary Jane.
I'll speak loud.
Yes.
Very small anyway, Mary Jane Sleds thirty one eighty one Songbird Circle. Uh the question I have tonight really is about Infomark's follow up to uh the letter that was supposed to send to the property owner back between north um and east because I'm very concerned about their property back there being open. We never heard back, even though Infomark said they were going to send the letter. Um I also would like to follow up and make sure that we are going to continue to look at the roadway situation up Five Oaks on both ends because we now have backward parking, over the line parking, no tags on cars, trailers.
Keep Sierra, please.
R Vs. Uh and again, over the line is a little concern of mine for safety. Um there's hydrants, there's and nothing's being done. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Can we keep the door closed, please? Or I mean, once?
Everything is set with the police room.
Oh.
So you run Danny Coffee, they're saying the from the church and they're gonna give you a free.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thanks. All right, thank you, Mary Jane. Uh Carol, Carol, yeah.
So I have, I know you guys are considering RFPs. I have three uh some suggestions for you. The first is that management companies should have some kind of record keeping system that is both resident and board friendly so that you have a really secret going on, you know, it's the following, all presidents can report things, you can see residents report all of that. We know from our current situation that that has been an ongoing issue over the years. The second thing is that I noticed that the RFPs included a number of developer references and I would just like to suggest that you get what that you speak with references who are resident on board numbers. Because developers, the management companies like developers because they are short term clients and they will have another development to give them. And they're they're not looking that closely at things, whereas resident boards, different story. And that's what we are. So we want to make sure that we have that you pick a management company that um has worked with a number of resident boards and that those resident boards have happened with them. And the last thing is I mean, make sure you look at the tenure of the people or the staff members of that management company. Because if they're having turnover every year or two, we know what happens. A lot of institutional knowledge is lost. There's a lot of catching up to do. It's just very disruptive. So make sure to try to find um a management company that has staff that have been there for a while and would suggest in the signs of leaving.
Hey, thank you, Carol. Uh we have any other audience comments? All right, do we have any uh comments from Zoom? All right, seeing none. Uh next, we have a adoption of the agenda. Um I'll move to adopt the agenda as it was posted online.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. All right, next, we have a private session. Um I believe I'm gonna turn the Zoom uh over to um counsel. I'm not sure if we have a phone line that we're gonna be able to connect to. As far as everyone that's here in person, uh considering the issues we've had, uh the coffee shop has uh opened up a space that uh we can use as a waiting area. Uh they'll even serve you drinks and everything, just say that you're here from the church. Uh but this portion is to discuss the specific details of possible security systems that would be a vulnerability due to the public records laws in the state. Once we're done discussing the details, then we'll bring everyone back. We'll discuss the price and if we want to proceed with any of those. But as far as like the details of where things would be installed, what's going to work and everything, that part is by law does not is not subject to uh public access like everything else we do. So at this time, I'd like to ask everyone that's here in person uh to uh make their way across the hallway.
Yeah, because you follow the beach trail and have some coffee.
Yep, we will send someone over as soon as we're done the uh private portion.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, this is a a security session pursuant to section two eighty six point zero one one three of the Florida statutes that requires us to to have this. And again, it's limited to talking about, you know, technology, locations of equipment, uh schedules and things like that. Anything that is not related to that would have to be uh during the open meeting, which we have an agenda item afterward. So it's a very good summary you provided. I just want to make sure we got the statutory citation uh in there. I'm gonna go ahead and uh mute myself, which I think you're gonna mute, turn off the camera for the Zoom. And then if somebody wants to call me to participate, they can call myself.
Okay, um can you, I I I sent my uh, I don't know if you have my cell number. If you want to dial that, I'll put on speakerphone after I uh turn off the camera and disconnect from the uh or else I'll leave the meeting running, but I'll just mute my microphone here and it'll resume once we're ready to bring it back to a public session.
That sounds good. I'll go ahead and give you a call and you might want to turn off the camera too.
Yep, I'm doing that as well. Yeah, thank you. All right, we're uh calling the meeting back into order. We had a discussion on the uh technical uh issues with security systems. Uh to summarize, we only had one proposal to look at. So no one on the board is comfortable on making a commitment to uh use any of those options. We uh I I will say the hundred thousand dollar placeholder we had in the budget is much too large even for if a maximal amount of security we might want to be adding. So if we don't remove that line, I'm completely thinking we might revisit this in a few months, once management is uh reestablished. Um with at the very least, we can severely cut down that uh number in the budget. Um I don't know if we have any other discussion just on the merits of um what we want to um if there's anything more we want to discuss right now, since we're not making any decisions or what's what's the more thing? Any other security based thoughts you want to bring up since that's a?
Anyway, we should discuss.
Sorry to interrupt. I don't think we can hear anything.
Oh. Can you guys hear us now?
Can you?
Yes, we can hear you, but.
Okay, did you hear what I was saying a couple of minutes ago?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh but yeah, it sounds like there's not any other discussion we want to have right now, uh not having um anything competitive to uh, you know, decide between. So if uh if that's the case, the next item on the agenda is the uh acceptance of the audit report. Um that was included in the agenda. Um weren't any findings. Mike, do you have anything you want to?
No, uh nothing to find anything on there. Uh standard standard audit um and everything is passing, so.
Okay, does uh anyone on board have any questions for district management about the audit and its findings?
Does this audit tell us where our uh reserve fund or 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 at? I'm an original question.
Uh, no, it wouldn't go into the detail.
Oh, what can you explain with the audit? What 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 you guys did or what was the purpose of that?
Yeah, so every year uh your uh well.
Make sure you guys can hear uh Mike speaking right now.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Well, we're we're making sure that everyone on uh our our lawyer and engineer are dialed in. We want to make sure. Are you guys able to hear uh Mike speaking?
Yes, I can, Dan.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mike.
No problem. Um so every year uh your auditing company, which is uh Burger Toons Elon, uh will look through your finances for the previous year to make sure expenditure was correct. Um if there wasn't any overspendings, uh underspendings and uh to make sure they check your cash flow. Uh they won't dig into your reserves uh and follow that track. Well, uh that'll be an internal thing, which um if you send that email to me for.
You have to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay.
Okay.
So uh and then I'll see what other uh expenses went to the reserve fund um to track how that. Okay, oh yeah, uh your your most important line is usually on the end. Uh in our opinion, Army Community Development District comply uh complied in all material aspects with the uh aforementioned requirements during the year and it's September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, and the the net position, that's another, you know, big number that uh sticks out and at over time as bonds are paid off, uh assets depreciate, it's a pretty steady amount, but that net position changes year over year. The change this year is pretty close to what it was the year before and the year before that, so no nothing really remarkable with the audit finding is what we're uh we're saying. Uh any other questions uh for the board or for from?
They also checked to see if we've complied with all the legal requirements?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so. That was part of it.
Okay. All right, uh so I I guess I'll uh I'll move to accept the uh fiscal year twenty twenty four audit report.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh next, the status update on the concrete contract, Mike.
Yes, so will we be. Um so uh we did speak with uh uh P S S C, I believe that's who we are. Um and they will not unfortunately honor the notice to exceed that of the eighty five thousand that was approved at the at the last meeting. Uh we said it was outside the timeframe um and due to that, we would have to adjust their nose to exceed to the higher amount that was on there to the amount of uh things that go from them.
In summary, we have the the go, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I can provide the numbers, the new numbers, which are really the numbers that they proposed and within the ranges from eighty six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to eighty nine thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. It would be somewhere in that range. That actually expired on the twenty second, but they've agreed to keep it open for another week if the board is inclined to go with their proposal. We did prepare an agreement. Uh we got to an agreement on all the terms. Uh the only thing we didn't agree to was the amount because that's a business decision for you all to make.
Right, and in summary, we had the proposal at our uh Marathon May meeting that went extremely long that had a cutoff date for uh preferred pricing for the contracts. Uh we had several, I mean, the meeting went to eleven, we had several uh topics that we didn't uh vote on executing in that meeting. In the June meeting, we verbally asked uh Infomark, we had Joseph and Jennifer were here. We asked if the vendor would still honor that preferred pricing. We were told they would. We voted to approve that uh not to exceed of that preferred pricing. Turns out they didn't. So uh it's a three thousand dollar difference, um relatively small in light of that, but we need to get the sidewalks repaired. So I will move to uh I don't have the number in front of me, but eighty nine thousand
Seven seventy five.
Seven hundred seventy five not to exceed for precision uh sidewalk to fix our cat brier sidewalks.
Second that.
Lucas is seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
I? Opposed?
I know.
Uh Britney say, we we have three votes. I mean, the motion carries, but um it's uh, yeah, it's uh it I I I'm.
Um.
I'm annoyed that.
Before you vote. Uh yeah, yes. Go ahead, Lucas.
Mike, what was the like turnaround time that they gave you once the contract is approved?
Um I think they're gonna get on it pretty quick because the longer that they wait, the more that the sidewalk's going to move. So um I'll look at the, go ahead.
No, I thought they they said once they start, it's like, you know, five to seven days that they're gonna get them fixed, so.
Yeah, one of the one of the reasons we chose them was they're supposed to be able to get in very quickly with their method and and get fixed quickly, so.
That's what I make sure once we, once we communicate that we approved it, we I want to make sure they jump on it and not a month later, two months later. So if we can make those little recommendations or clauses in there.
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm gonna pull up the agreement while you all still talk and then towards the end of the meeting, I'll be able to tell you what we build into the agreement.
Okay.
And we already talked to them and had everything ready. So we all did approve it. Yeah, I spoke with her actually outside before the meeting started, so I just gotta let her know so that way it's already.
Excellent. All right, sounds like the right. Thank you, Mike. All right, next on the agenda is.
Vote. Um I know you guys have the votes.
Well, but.
I'm slightly torn, but you guys have the votes, so I'm gonna vote nay.
Okay, uh so for the record, that was Supervisor Cornell voting nay, but the uh motion carrying with the other three supervisors, uh supervisors present voting in favor. Uh next item is the discussion of responses to informal request for proposals for district management services. We have received five proposals. They are all uh presented in full uh in the agenda. Um Mike, some of those were kind of blurry too. Is uh is that, is it like a weird scanner you guys have?
So G M S, that was particularly from them. Uh I can't speak on the the chart that came through. Uh it was not blurry on our end when we provided to the mailing company, but the G M S one, that is solely from them. We just added to the.
Okay, but I'm I'm saying like in this agenda, some of the documents that were scanned on here are nearly unreadable.
Oh, so we don't actually scan anything. This is all electronically sent to us. So I I don't know why they would have came in. Um are you talking about the?
I I mean, it's more, it's more of an editor. It's 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 not really as important as the content of what's in there, just that was in service related to the other issue we had about the assessment uh being mailed out.
It it should not have. I remember being a little clear in email, maybe it's just.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't remember seeing it blurry, but I did it from the email.
Right, okay, so so anyways, the we have these uh five uh proposals for management services. The goal tonight is to down select. I would propose to two or three uh that we want to have show up at our August seventh meeting, which is the delayed regular July meeting for them to actually give us a uh full proposal. Um, you know, presentation and everything, be available for question and answer. Um but we rather than having all five, every single respondent, we weren't sure how many we might have received. This is our chance to pick the ones that we like the best and only have those that we think have the best chance of being our selection, show up at that August seventh meeting.
Well, I must agree with you.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I I just want to make a couple of opening comments here since we've kind of been um collecting the proposals. So you've got you've got five proposals. They're all very qualified firms, good firms. Um I think you're gonna be pleased with the end result, whatever the board decides. Um but I I would just say that when we originally did this, we wanted to shortlist it down to just a few. Um the way that it's looking right now is you're probably uh not going to get field proposals from folks other than uh the ones you probably have district management proposals from. And the reason I say that is because we sent out courtesy copies of the field proposals to all the companies that uh we sent out the district management R F P to. Um and we have not received any requests from other companies as a result of the newspaper advertisement. So in in determining the shortlisting that you're doing right now, you're doing that without having the benefit of seeing whatever the field proposals were. And certainly, had we received eight or nine district management proposals, the the shortlisting would make a lot of sense. Um but without seeing those field proposals, you may or may not want to shortlist tonight. So that's just my comment for the board's discussion. But that was originally why we were going to do this, but I'm just saying the way it's shaken out with the field proposals, it may be a little bit difficult if you get down to, let's just say, two tonight, but then you see field proposals from folks on the seventh that you like, but you've not invited those people to present on district management. So with that, I'll I'll be quiet.
Okay, and uh refresh my memory, the uh what was the date for the uh the deadline for the field service proposals?
July thirty first. And so we'll be able to get those to the board either that day or the next day, and then you're going to rank them on the seventh and have um uh presentations on the seventh.
Right, based on the metrics that we set out. Okay, uh yeah, I was pretty sure that there's there there's still some time in the window, but um yeah, I'll we'll we'll take that into consideration that we maybe don't have quite so many field service proposals and because of that, maybe we don't need to pare this down and maybe we ask all five to show up at the uh at the seventh. Um I will.
So, yeah, Lucas. Let me clarify, Mike. So if we down select three, are you saying that the other two aren't going to propose for the field service contracts and we're only stuck with those three?
No, I mean, you may, they may propose, but if you're gonna be inviting people in and telling them, hey, come in at this time to present for district management, only two companies, but let's say a third company who's not one of the two you you kind of down select tonight uh comes in really strong on the field, you're not gonna have a presentation from them on district management services. That that's my point.
Okay.
Okay, um uh I'll open up uh any other uh board members have thoughts before I share mine?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe we should just kind of all say like one, two, three, what we were thinking. Did you guys like write them?
Yeah, write them, yeah. So we just started like the one we will throw out first, like the worst one that you think?
Sure, who is that?
I I have uh P F M as my last.
Same.
I was working together.
You're my number one.
Oh, God, don't.
Okay, um we will, we'll have order.
Let me say my reasoning, so.
Let's uh, are you, let's go, let's.
Four.
Let's, okay, well, I I really like your methodology, but let's Lucas spoke up first, let's go around the table.
The the research I did is that they're not really a management company. They're like a financial accounting firm. And they don't really have management and C D D experience. So and if you look at the proposals, way different from the other district management service proposals. So that was why their their prices in line with kind of everyone else's, but um and they're also really scattered across the United States. They're not really local in central Florida.
Yeah, and they probably don't do field services, so they were my number one, but I had.
They're just my my point.
Okay, well, you want to go through the your thoughts on the other ones or we?
Uh what did you vote as P F M?
Um I I I basically chose the three uh I thought were the best ones to bring forward, and those were the three that uh also each of them addressed some sort of specific issue we've had um with management in the past, and all three of them had the capability of doing field services. So that was uh Vesta. Uh they had uh yeah, they were the most expensive, but they also have priced in the uh board and residence uh access and uh you know, reporting uh you know, kind of issue manage uh i- issue tracking uh system that we have just been discussing for many months here and uh fair or not of, you know, thinking that uh you know, Infomark could or should have done that. It's right there being present uh, you know, presented as part of their bid for uh Vesta uh coming in. Uh Rosetta, uh they have aquatics uh on the in-house, so that's a benefit for them. And then um uh what was um? Yeah, G M, sorry, G M S was the other one that um and I don't have it pulled up in front of me here.
So G M S I had was the highest quote. I had that at eighty five point six K, so Vesta was up at eighty K, I thought, which I wrote down eighty K. And then uh S D S was seventy seven, seventy six point five K. And Rosetta was seventy seven point one three.
Oh, sorry, yeah, and and G M S, the their uh their pain point that they addressed with their proposal was they touted uh low turnover with their um with their management and that we would be involved in any discussion of uh change in staffing for district management. Uh that was, you know, obviously, that was uh an issue that we've had with Infomark over the last several years. Um so since e- each each of those three addressed a specific uh, you know, pain point or unique aspect for our community and our local and have field services capability, those were my top three. So if we were shortlisting, it would be those three for me. Uh that was Vesta, Rosetta and G M S.
Um so my my my, I like G G M S and Rosetta were number one and two for me. My big hangup with G M S is that it's a seven percent year over year increase, which is ridiculous, right? So if that's negotiable, then they're definitely on the table for me. If it's a hard seven percent, then they're in last place.
So G M S, I think on paper, is probably the best company. But they're also like a huge monopoly. They have like two hundred and seventy five C D D companies that they manage and they're the highest expensive. I think the other companies, which I had Vesta, S D S and Rosetta, they're more smaller based C D D uh management companies that have more kind of a homie feel to it. They have a lot of experience, but they're more focused on smaller communities, which I don't think were really a huge community. These people, in my opinion, have a lot of experience and sounds great, but I don't think we're gonna get that interaction and maybe um just kind of that businessy hit like management style. So I had them ranked fourth just because they were too expensive. I thought they are are too large for us. So that's why I had them fourth.
I mean, I could definitely agree about the big stuff because S D S was most was appealing to me mostly because it was very routine kind of feel. It felt like it would be very personalized, very tailored, so I'm with you there.
Okay.
Um so I I have Rosetta as number one. They have a three percent year over year only starting year three too, so we wouldn't even see an increase for a little bit.
That was number two for me, but I, yeah, I'm, I mean, I really just wanted to eliminate two because I think we need to get down to three, but um those are my my picks.
Spoke with Rosetta. Uh the app that can be used with the residency board, right, sense?
Okay, uh, thank you. Um Joe, you did a you've got a lot of uh papers in front of you. I'm 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 really, but let's let's hear what you got.
Well, but when you guys start talking, I lose it, you know, what's in my head.
Oh, we we wanted.
Well, because I like to be agreeable, so you know.
No, that that's the whole reason having us here.
But that's why I lose it, then I'm there. Oh, I don't want to say that, you know.
I'll go.
Um so I I took it more, all these companies are really in some ways the same. It's just like if you change car insurance, you know, they all have the same business plan setup, whatever, not exactly, but you know. And so I was looking for reasons to not like them instead of reasons to like them. I kind of came in the back door that way. And um and and poor Rosetta, but their letter is dated July third, which is, we hadn't even sent out the R F P yet.
And it was. But I will take responsibility for that because there were a couple that I had been in touch with prior and came in did onsite prior to the actual R F P by now.
And they addressed the letter to Dear Daniel. Unless they were sending it to Dan, is the only thing I can think of. But G M S's letter was addressed to Dear Mr. Clark, so um um so, you know, that I mean, I'm picking up little things, but if you're, sometimes those are the things that sink the ship, you know?
Yeah.
And um I did like Vesta because of the um the technology, um the software, the app, excuse me, I can't even say my words. But um I did talk to um a C D D, but it seems to be interesting conversation with a guy, but they've had three management firms in the last four years.
Does that?
Um it's a C D D over in Satellite Beach.
Oh.
And um how I did it is I went and I was looking at the the companies and then I'd find some of their C D Ds and look at their websites because I also to me, I mean, this is silly, but if anything else is equal, the website is the most important thing to me.
Oh, that's.
And our website is so bad. And we need to start driving because questions can be answered there, announcements can be made, um points can be clarified and um I was started working with Joseph on it, but of course now he's gone, so it's kind of falling through the cracks to improve some of the pages. Um so anyway, I'm digressing, but um so the the different ones that have the website, so then I called this one C D D and um because I noticed they had their field services was a different company than their district management. Um and so I just wanted to ask him about that, but boy, did I get an earful. And um so anyhow, yeah, they've had to um all of these companies in the last four years and uh they now have P F M and they love them. And they had G M S.
You moved first.
No, no, that was a story and that was A I I did. They did that, that's boring, but um so I wasn't, that wasn't really in my heart, you know, that was from the A I thing. But they um they really like G M S, but G M S dumped them because their meetings were four hours long.
I saw that, yeah.
So um.
Be on the shopping box.
Yeah, yeah, but. Yeah, yeah, but, um. Anyhow, so it all just turns to mush in my mind, and, um, the things that I'm focusing on, I don't think are deal breakers. And so I guess I'm interested in hearing from all of them, but I'm, I'm also willing to cut two, if that's what the rest of the board wants to do.
Really, we could cut one and we meet somewhere in the middle, um, but as far as Vesta, similarly, similarly to you. I did wanna hear from some of their CD, uh, actual users, right, actual clients, and, um. I think it was a pretty mixed bag, but there was a lot of complaints and a lot of turnover too, which we've been experiencing with Infomark. And so that was a really big red flag to me, there's constant turnover.
Well, Rosetta has a lot of turnover also, that came on my, uh, one analysis. So, um, I think it was PFM and GMS were the two that had. People had been there a long time, they didn't have as much turnover, but then I say that, then I have to go back and look at this multitude of nodes.
So.
So that'd be a nice question, if they were all here in person, we can just say, you know.
Certainly back here, uh, I I almost say overdressed for a CDD meeting, are you from, uh, one of the proposing companies? Okay.
Yeah, and, um, Mr. Chairman, to be fair.
Oh, hold, 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 hold on just a second, Mike's, uh, trying to tell something, uh, we have.
Yeah, just to be fair, uh, and I appreciate people coming to the, you know, to the board meeting, to be fair, we, we told. Um, the presenters or proposers that we would not be doing presentations tonight.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, I know we have somebody from one of the other firms that's, you know, on the phone, so if you are going to open it up and do that, that's different than what. I told them, but it's not a formal, um, RFP, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood what I told the proposer. So if there are people who aren't there, it's because we told them that it wasn't gonna be addressed until the seventh in terms of presentation, so I just want you to know that.
Oh, and and I I would agree with that, I I wouldn't want to, uh, give any, you know, an advantage over the others, um, we. We, they they each gave us the, you know, answer the same form questions and all that, we're able to do is apples to apples comparison as possible between the five that responded. Um.
But I would like to know who's online, so we can actually just get an attendance of the. Potential, uh, district management companies that we're going to take into account at the seventh meeting.
Uh, is that reasonable, Mike, can you tell us, uh, who, who you know of that's dialed in?
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Huber is probably at your meeting, uh, from Rosetta, if that's correct.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, and I I see Lynn Mullins, uh, from PFM, uh, is dialed in, and then I don't. I don't recognize any of the other names that are, that are on there right now.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I need to. I it it, this is as loud as it'll go, unfortunately, uh, it will go up on, uh, YouTube after the fact, uh, hopefully it picks up. Us talking here at the table at least, um, yeah, we're doing the best we can.
Does it make sense though, then? We have them both here, should we just not ask them any questions, or should we?
I, my, my thought would, just in the interest of fairness and everything, and, uh, I mean. Recognize and appreciate that they showed up, and if we, um, but, uh, yeah, I I don't think in the, in. In the scope of the agenda, we're just reviewing and possible down selecting here, so let, let's keep it with that.
Yeah, no, we, uh, well, I was just gonna say, like, Mike, if we have questions with. One of the associates here after the meeting, is that allowed, or is that frowned upon?
You individually, if you can find your discussions to the District Management Services, can talk to anybody that you like other than board members. So you can talk to them individually after the meeting, but it should only be one board member in that discussion.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Okay, uh, so of the five that we have, and between the four of us that are here. Um, what, what are our thoughts? I mean, we could bring all five forward, we've heard, I I'd say we've heard positive and negative for. Uh, all five, uh, to to some degree, what, what, what are our, what are our thoughts is? Uh, on that meeting in the seventh, uh, we're starting it at four, and we're supposed to be starting it with these, uh, management pre- uh. Presentations, we also have the public hearing for adopting the budget. We also have field services that we need to review and score, so, uh, I'm. I. That that just, let's keep that in mind, yeah.
Do we wanna eliminate one, or do we wanna just bring all five? Or let's vote and see if we were gonna eliminate one, who would the one be, and. We'll see for all the C page.
I I already gave my thoughts, I had, uh, picked the top three, but, uh. I I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to bringing all five, uh, was Vesta, Rosetta, and GMS.
So, I guess, Mike, uh, they're gonna propose a separate. Contract for the field services, right, or are they gonna combine them two, and then we're gonna vote on that together?
So the intention is, and and I have to wait and see what field services proposals that I actually get. But if you end up getting the exact same companies providing di- district management proposals and field proposals. We would probably figure out a way to modify that agenda, so that there's just one question and answer session and one presentation. So that will save some time off what we had originally anticipated, I would suggest that you hear the presentations. Then you go ahead and score the field services. And then that's gonna select your field services operator, and then after that, then you would go ahead and determine who your district manager is going to be. That's the, that's how I would structure the agenda at your next meeting.
Okay.
And and I, again, I mean, there's you, there's nothing lo- wrong with shortlisting, um, but. Again, the the risk you do by doing that is somebody may come in very strong on the field that you didn't anticipate, and. Then it's, it's more difficult for the, for you to deal with that, so anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on that, and it's not, it's five is not a, a. Huge number to deal with, especially, it's the same five proposing for both services, which I think is likely.
All right, um, I'm. Donning heads, all five?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, I think it's, it's been, and they've already gone to all the trouble of this, and I think to give them a fair shake. And it's, we get ten minutes, and then we have five minutes, or vice versa, so.
Right, and that, and that would again be, uh, we, we could consider the nu- uh, number and the who of the field service proposals. When we set up the agenda for that meeting, maybe it makes sense to, you know, back everything up that way.
But since we have PFM on the line, they make you field services, I can't remember. Let me ask them.
Well, I think, I think we shouldn't be considering field services today, um, I believe that that is a.
Yeah, alright.
I I think it's likely all five will propose for all services, that's, that's what I think.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask you guys, what are your thoughts, what are you guys thinking as far as? Field services, are you wanting to, does anybody feel strongly one way or the other about having one company do both?
Um, I, I think that has the highest ceiling for, uh, performance of having things, uh, vertically integrated. That has, that's no guarantee that it will be good, but there's at least the best opportunity for. You know, more seamless interaction between, you know, the, the district management that talks to us on a daily basis and. Uh, tracking things, flowing issues then.
Love too, I I then had another thought of, you know, the accountability factor, and. No offense, but nothing's ever in my spot, right, they're, they cover for their guys, I mean, it just makes sense, right, I mean. Whatever, they're all one team, so I did think that. I'm very conflicted this, plus I kinda wanted to hear what you guys thought, because obviously it seemed. Having the idea of having this seamless engine that works is great. The, I don't think we've seen it like shake out that way, and then again, the accountability part is, is really.
Right, I I I said it was a ceiling, it's, it's a potential, but there's no guarantee, obviously, um, the. Correct, um, I I mean, they're separate contracts and they're, we can score them separately, so I'm, I'm.
Just wanting to see like.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
To one way or the.
It was, I thought, and now I'm, I've gone, yeah, so, um, I think what it all boils down to is. All five of these companies are good, and I think we can make it work with any of them, I don't think we're gonna make a mistake here, I also don't think we're gonna make a mistake. If we separate them or keep me, I think it's gonna be how we handle it, is gonna, and I think we're, we're, we can be successful regardless of what decision we make. And, um, so I'm, I'm pretty, I mean, I I talk off like, you know, but I'm pretty comfortable with the whole thing, you know, yeah, if that makes sense.
Right, we've put a lot of thought into how will we be scoring the field services, which we have to use a scoring rubric just because of the size of the contract. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I mean, if we find that there's one far and away favorite for field services, and it's not our far and away favorite for management.
Then we'll split, yeah. They all get along, you know, because that is, uh.
They're all gonna be in this, in the same room in a few weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we'll find out, huh?
Okay, um, so I guess that we're not taking any action to down select, we're, uh, welcoming all five. To bring a proposal presentation to our August seventh meeting, which will kick off breaking early at four PM. Hopefully, hopefully in our regular venue, um. I I guess next item on the agenda would be the update on the, um. Oh, update on status of request for field management, did you already kinda get that, Mike?
Um, I'll just, I'll, I'll be very brief, um, we advertised the official notice on July tenth. Um, we sent copies of the, uh, RFP to the district management companies and. Uh, other folks who, uh, we thought might be interested in that, just to make sure that, you know, we touched all those bases, we've received no. Uh, requests for copies of the RFP package as a result of the advertisement. Um, today was the last day for questions, uh, we didn't receive any questions. Uh, from any of the proposers, we did receive one question from Leland. Uh, but then Leland indicated they are not going to be submitting a proposal for, uh, field management or maintenance services. They said that they were not interested at this time and wanted to step back from the, from the process. So your next steps are, the proposals are due to our office on July thirty-first. We will turn those around and get those to the board before that we review them for compliance. So just understand, uh, that's just the timeframe that we're under, we'll get them out to you as quickly as we can, but we're not gonna review them. Before we send them out, and then we will, uh, work with your district manager and your chairman to come up with a efficient agenda. Uh, for August seventh, but all those proposers, uh, will be invited to attend and make presentations, and we'll. Work on the presentations once we see, you know, what we get from the field management, but the intention was, you have a lot of their qualifications already in writing. Give them probably five minutes to talk about, you know, their company and how they approach the services, and then give the board ten minutes apiece. To, uh, ask questions of them.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Um, that is everything for the, uh, business items, um, next would be supervisor requests.
One.
Yes, go ahead, Brittany.
Um, I had a resident reach out because their access card wasn't working anymore, like they still have the access card, but it's just, it doesn't let them in. Um, and I spoke to Raoul about it, and he indicated that, yeah, just do a replacement, so we went through all that. But then they were being charged, and the resident was disgruntled. That their access card was just shut off for like no apparent reason, and then they were being charged for new ones. And so Raoul explained that that has happened, uh, on more than one occasion, and the procedure is to always just charge for a new access card. Regardless of if it's the resident's fault or not, and, um, obviously, I was not happy with that. And he said that that is this protocol, and I I understand he's just doing his job, it's literally not his fault, that's what he was told to do. And so I'm bringing it up because that's what they said I have to do.
Um, okay, I mean.
So if it's lost, I I obviously agree that they need to pay for a replacement, but if it's just not working for like no reason. They're not a renter, so it's not like the lease expired or anything like that, um, so I was just, yeah, I wanted to talk that out with you.
Okay, was it the whole family?
It was the whole.
Cuz sometimes the cards get ruined.
It was all three, yeah.
All three residents of the household.
Now, mine's nine years old, you can barely recognize it, but the card, tap power part still works, but yeah, I I mean, I would agree, but.
Sounds like that was turned off for some reason.
But I I would, I would also say, I mean, that's kind of the, uh, that's a revisit in a couple of months, since we have a new management company and new. You know.
I mean, this family is still waiting for their cards, cuz they don't wanna pay the thirty dollars.
Right, um, I mean. I I I, I, I mean, I don't know if we need to take any action to, I mean, that's, I think it's within our district.
Take action to like change verbiage somewhere, but I think that if we all agree that, you know, we can't just. The resident cards can't just stop working for no reason, and then we charge them. I mean, cuz in the residence, it looks like, well, this is a scam, you just turned my cards off, and and now I gotta pay for new cards.
Yeah.
And and again, I spoke to Raoul, and he says this is not the first occurrence, so I think that we probably should decide right now, like, hey. If the resident has their card in their hand and it's just not working, we.
Well, I I I think what would need to happen is that we, the direction to Infomark would be if Infomark, excuse me. Has no record of their access being revoked for any reason, and it's just a, either a faulty equipment or. Accounting error or whatever happened, that that shouldn't, we we don't think the resident should need to bear the.
Motion, well, no, can I, can we add to our rules and regulations, or does it have to be like that?
You you said the R word, rules, that's a, that's a public, that's a workshop, that's, there's a lot.
Asking, so we can't do anything with that to, um, to.
Is that a rule somewhere?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I I think the board, um, can take action tonight that just says, you know, until we get to through the rulemaking proceeding. If in fact it isn't a rule, that if a card is deactivated, uh, through no fault of the resident. That there will be no charge for reactivating it or reissuing the card, the board has that authority if they wanna do that tonight.
I'm, that's, yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, that can just be our direction to Infomark, as long as there's no record of their access being revoked for some reason. Then there's no reason we should be charging them for an equipment failure or accounting issue.
I just all the words, I will be perfect, I just wanted to make sure because, um. Our field service manager couldn't act without your approval, so I just wanted to make sure that.
Yep, and I.
So under, um, request, and I do have one I just thought of, and, um, so over the last several months, I've been. Working on a lot of these things, and we really need to have a, um. Workshop or a meeting, or spend some time talking about our reserve study, and you know, what we need to be setting aside and that. And also, our rules and regulations need to be reviewed again, they're six years old, and, um. There's one in there, for instance, anyone can spend a thousand dollars and have a family membership to use all the amenities in harmony. The pools, the boats, et cetera, and that's way too cheap, it shouldn't be any less than. What the, but, um, the highest person pays for the CDD and O and M. They shouldn't get it cheaper than the people who live here, is what I'm saying. So that's my opinion, that's what I'm saying, I think we should review those and see, and maybe up that amount, at the moment, we don't have anyone taking advantage of it. But, um, that's just an example, there's several other rules I think need to be tweaked, refined, and that, so. Um, I'm just warning you all that that's coming.
Okay, we got a busy month.
Yes.
No, I've been working on this for about six months, I've got files, 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 and stuff, but it hasn't been appropriate to bring it up, you know?
Um.
One more.
Yeah, go for it.
I know last meeting, we voted that the resident at three one six nine was gonna be getting their deposit back. And that's still not, has been the case, I have reached out to Jennifer, I have reached out to Angel. I have reached out to just Infomark, general mailbox. Um, text messages, emails, phone calls, zero correspondence back for a month, zero, like crickets. From all of the above. The resident is now getting legal involved, so if that costs us money, that's gonna absolutely be a problem. So do you have any update on where, um, this resident's deposit is?
Three one six nine, Dr. Sky, it was mailed out last week to the, per their request.
For their lawyer?
No, um, they called me, uh, I gave them the option to either pick it up from the office, because it was never deposited, so it's not like.
Right.
Check, so they could either go pick it up, and it seemed like that was directed to them before as well. Uh, from the last meeting, um, that was just in the office, and then when I talked to them.
How did it direct into them? I don't think that.
Told to them, talk right?
There, they haven't.
No, no, so, call, they, I mean, they called me, they had our number, so they said they talked to somebody, but they didn't understand what they were told. Uh, they did talk to him about having a little counsel, or legal as well, um, I told them the check was in the office, and that they could go pick it up, or we could mail it out to them. They said, oh, if you could mail it to me, that'd be perfect, and.
Is this their check, and we never cashed it?
Yeah, oh, so it's no funds were transferred from.
No fund for ever transfer, it, it, yeah, and at, and again, at this point, it's probably a moot point with the whole Infomark thing, but. You know, we did vote on that last month, and thankfully, last week it was finally mailed out, but.
But it sounds like, when were you in touch with them though, prior to that, right?
Uh, I talked to them on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I talked to them Wednesday, and then it was sent out on Friday for their requests.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so as long as it was mailed out.
Uh, Lucas, did you have anything? Uh Lucas, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I'll uh and uh this, this isn't um. Putting any uh uh pressure on David, um the the, you know, he wasn't uh ready, you know, kind of short nose for his meeting. But considering we had a, you know, as I mentioned last uh month or last meeting, uh spoken to the county and had at least. Uh notional guidance that there might be a pathway to um. Uh re reestablishing the R B storage area, alleviating some of the parking issues, uh had asked him to uh revisit some of the. Uh. Engineering work that had already been done a number of years ago, back when we were. Still in the process of trying to do the expansion and everything uh the the first time around um and.
Maintenance facility.
No, 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 not the maintenance facility. This is for the the R, the uh. The R B storage lot, which relates to the garden road and and what what level of improvements. Would be needed to get the county's blessing to then. Right, and there's other, there's other aspects of that. There's a, there's a amount of fencing that. I had the county confirm the amount that would be needed. That's what was done in a P D change a number of years ago. Uh there there's other factors that we'd have to consider. The point of asking for that was just so we would have a sense of what that number was. When we're making our decision of what our reserve contribution is going to be for the upcoming budget year, so if. And and again, uh you know, we we didn't have anything in the uh agenda, um. I I'm I'm just saying it just for uh people's awareness, uh David, I'm not sure if you will have anything ready for the. Uh the meeting on the seventh, and again, that's gonna be a jam packed meeting. Um be, can you give us, I I guess uh.
Yeah, I'll dust off the plans, Dan, that we did a couple of years ago. They had the fencing requirements, the landscaping requirements. The garden road upgrade. So I'll get that dusted off. I'll provide plans and the old costs. To all the, you know, to the Infomark to get to you guys in advance of the August seventh meeting.
Okay, excellent, um.
I have one go back, I'm sorry.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Lucas.
Um. The maintenance facility, so for most people don't know this, we were, I guess, forced by the county to. Uh remove our stuff from the garden area where we had our storage, right? So we were looking.
Yeah, those never permitted to move the trailer back there.
In recent months and Dave and Mike are gonna need your help. That the county either removed that restriction to us. And we no longer have that. Is that true?
That's not what was communicated to me, uh or it was some.
But I was just confused because the last meeting we had. Um, you know, we needed a maintenance facility, then the county backed off us, and then now we don't. So I just want to clarify. I- is that the case or?
And no, so uh and the gentleman I talked to at the county, uh he, there was no change with that. There was not a. Uh permit for the kind of structure that was back there to have an occupied building on that uh tract of property. We were able to use it for storage pending uh the blessing of the uh fire marshal. On what level of uh road improvements would be needed for the garden road, which is the only access back there. They were not willing to give us access through the property that the county just acquired back there, but. In and this is just, you know, things change over time. The. His conversation with the the fire marshal that would be making the decision right now was not uh. You know, we weren't needing, it it was like a a a fairly large hammerhead turnaround area that we would be needing. That that's apparently, whoever is making the decision now, apparently that they're 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 a little more relaxed on what the requirements would be there. We'd have to have some areas of the storage lot like blocked off to be uh accessible for turning around. But as long as we did that, we wouldn't need to like make some new. Hammerhead turnaround, you know, out of the new roadway, so.
Okay.
And the 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 load requirements um. That will uh that'll be part of what David uh presents and whether those numbers that we had. Based on a couple of years ago, so the prices are old, the analysis is old, but still that at least gives us a starting point to consider. If that's something we think we can do in the near term.
Okay.
Uh I had one other uh supervisor request, uh. A uh local businessman, uh Mr. Brady Evans has uh taken over the operation of the uh one. Unrelated to what I'm saying in the Facebook forum, but also the uh community magazine. Um I, he reached out to uh all of us and. Since all three of us are in the room, I think, uh so I guess uh Lucas, Brittany and myself had said we'd be willing to. Uh, you know, write articles for that. I mean, while we're all here and we're allowed to talk to each other about potential C D D business. Are are, is it just C D D stuff we want to write about? Do you, do you have like a specific topic that maybe you want to? Write for the magazine and they can be like separate things, cause we we can't be doing back and forth. He's not gonna let us do editorial stuff, obviously. But as far as what we want to. But what are our thoughts? We're all three in the room and we're allowed to talk to each other right now, so what are our thoughts?
So why did he just pick you three?
No, no.
There too.
Yeah, we we responded.
You were on Facebook, that's why.
You were included in the note, you were.
Oh, it was on Facebook?
Yeah, oh.
He actually had you in there, so I couldn't find you, it depends for district.
Yes.
So uh so if you want to write, I mean, if, I mean, I know Carol has been doing her, you know, articles for. Uh many years, extreme, uh ten years, thank you, extremely informative. Uh I've written, I want to say exactly one for the. The refinance a couple of months ago. Uh I mean, we're in the room, we can talk about now, what are.
Like I told Brady, I was happy to. Help in any way I could. And since he said you guys were too, my initial thought was um. If it's gonna be a standing C D D section on a monthly basis, then maybe we could just rotate. And every month, one of us take it, so it doesn't fall on on any one of us.
What kind of topics would we have in there?
Um, if you, if you, if you're uh. I'll leave my comments out of it. I'll leave my comments out of it, but the entire back catalog is available online. You can go back and read. Um any previous uh chairs uh did. I were more prolific writers than myself, but um yeah, you can go back and.
I'll take a look. Yeah, I told Brady, I said, once we get past all this stuff, we can kind of revisit.
Right, oh, he's on the call, hey there.
Talk about what's pending. What's upcoming, what the board's gonna be talking about, what decisions were made. Maybe not your opinion about.
Right, maybe just like a recap of whoever, whoever was handling that one. Give a recap of the meeting.
Right.
If we can objectively do that.
Yes, cause in, right, and then in the past and the apologies to Carol, there's been, you know. Dueling, you know, who can get their recap onto onto Facebook first to again. Because once you have replies, then it's a, you know, a sunshine risk, so it can't be any kind of back and forth. Uh it's not a editorial page, but as far as, you know, here's a summary of what happened to informed residents, I'm I'm fine with sharing uh.
Well, it's a good way to reach out to and say. How many people would like to have a a pickleball court? You know, I mean, it's a way to get community feedback, because not everybody's on Facebook. But everybody gets the magazine, so. We made the attempt, you know, just, I mean, I'm just using that as an example, pickleball, it could be anything, you know.
So, okay, uh do we have any other supervisor requests?
We're gonna be busy, aren't we?
Uh, yeah, I can't say this for next month, but do we want to adjourn after seventy eight minutes? All in favor. Bye bye. Thank you, everybody, for coming, for being patient. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Dan. Can you, can you confirm we're not meeting July thirty first?
Say say that again, Mike?
Can you confirm we are not meeting July thirty first?
Uh, yeah, not to my knowledge. As far as I know, the the next meeting will be August seventh.
Great, thank you so much.
Alright, thanks. Alright, take care.